Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Well, welcome to this meeting, the December meeting of the County Council Executive. So could I start with item one, please? Apologies for absence. I believe councillor Boquet is apologising, she's poorly today.
Yes, thank you. We have apologies from councillor Mrs Boquet and we also have apologies from Andrew Crocombe, executive director for resources.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Any further apologies? Good. Number two, item two, declaration of interest, are there any? I'm not seeing any, so thank you for that. Number three, item three, announcements by members of the executive or directors, are there any such announcements? Councillor Petroyd.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. I just wanted to announce the appointment of our new AD for property, Jane Salby-Warrington, who'll be starting later this month and we look forward to working on to the LCC family. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further? Okay then, I'll move on to item four, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the first of November. Is it your wish I sign these as a true and accurate record? Agreed? Thank you very much. Then on to the first substantive item, which is item five, the Revenue Budget Monitoring Report, quarter two for this financial year. So I presume, Michelle, you're going to just walk us through it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is the second quarter's report on our revenue budget position. The report summarises our forecasts against the budget for the current financial year up to the position at the end of September and the appendices that start at page seventeen give more detail of the variances that are reported in the report. Our current forecast variance excluding schools is an underspend of 1.6 million pounds, which is a movement of 2.3 million from the small overspend that was reported in quarter one. And the table on page seventeen shows you how this is broken down by service areas. When we set our budget for the current year, we included inflationary increases based on the predicted levels at that time and given the uncertainty, we also increased our contingency in anticipation of some of these additional pressures, which effectively enabled us to report the position that we're in at the moment. And the forecasts that have been presented assume that the pressure created by the pay award has been met by the contingency, but the forecasts do include the increases relating to contract and utility inflationary price increases. So the main significant variances include, on the place directorate, we've got street lighting costs, a pressure created by the utility there on the street lighting energy costs of 1.5 million and also the highways contract, the mid-year price change to support the supply chain, which has been offset by some additional TRO permitting income. This has been offset in part by underspends in other budgets, which relates to the insurance premiums and our pension liabilities and additional grants that we have received for extended free rights to travel and independent living that weren't known about when we set the budget. We are still expecting to update these forecasts as we go forward and the notable forecast that is missing from this that will need to be updated is around home-to-school transport, where we are still seeing pressures. But obviously, this is an area where we get a lot of activity in September with the new academic year, so we're currently working on the forecast for that area. And that's all I was going to do by way of introduction. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Parker, obviously you're just reporting on the overview and scrutiny comments.
Yes, indeed. I didn't attend the meeting personally because on that particular day, I attended the funeral of John Sharma, who many people will know from his work as a trade union representative on the county council. Councillor Smith chaired the meeting and the comments of the overview and scrutiny management board have been captured and circulated and I think members of the executive will have a copy. The discussions seem to be around, first of all, the Autumn Statement and the potential for increases in the council tax. We haven't got the full details yet in relation to the implications in relation to social care pressures for the budget. We know that if we increase the council tax, then we get certain amounts of money for every millions of pounds for every percentage increase. It's commented on about the national living wage, which would affect a number of the county councils' contracts. There was attention paid to the recognition of people's ability to pay their council tax bills, but there is a council tax support system in place. Highways is forecasting an overspend of 1.57 million pounds at the moment, but that could be reduced depending on the demand for the winter maintenance budget, obviously during the winter. That's to do with the number of grit runs. Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue Service comments were made about the earmark reserves to mitigate the cost pressures for the whole-time firefighter recruitment and there was enough reserves to last for three or four years based on the specific cost pressures. Children's Services, of course, the problem in relation to children's services was in relation to children's trying to retain within the county council children's lawyers. Locums were heavily relied on, but they're expensive and even locums are now becoming difficult to recruit and retain because they were able to command quite a sizable cost in the recruitment market. I think that's as much as I want to say about what was said at the overview and scrutiny management board. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, questions, comments on the on the report, please? Is anybody? I'd probably just ask, Michelle, in terms of inflationary pressures, what the current sort of projection is? Is it, on the news, it did say it was that the headline rate is coming down, but I'm not sure whether any directors can tell us whether the pressures are indeed decreasing in terms of materials and contractor prices?
I think that the directors might want to comment for themselves, but I think we're seeing some levelling off with the utility cost prices. So we buy our gas and electric through Espo, through the Espo contract, and we benefited from that in terms of we had a lag with some of the impact of the early increase in prices and they forward buy our utility requirements and they're starting to see some of the prices levelling off in that area. I think we've had a couple of bits of feedback around the construction prices, some of that's levelling off now. I think we do have some time lag on some of our contracts, so we'll end up catching up with some of the pay increases that will probably hit us more next year because obviously that will be the impact of this year's pay increases. But I don't know if any of the other directors want to comment specifically. Andy, I don't know if it's particularly relevant for your area with place.
Yeah, I think whilst the headline messages about inflation are about that reducing, construction inflation tends to always be above the headline level of inflation and as Michelle's indicated, some material prices are settling down, others are showing volatility. So I think we have to sort of continue to sort of keep it under close review and keep it under monitor what the impacts of that are. In terms of the wider impacts on the supply chain, we're still getting messages of there being volatility and pressures on the supply chain further down below our main contractors and that is something which both ourselves and the main contractors are mindful of in terms of making sure that we don't end up with a lose-lose situation in terms of increased costs at the same taps of perhaps absolutely some of the supply chain unfortunately sort of finding it difficult to actually survive in the market.
Yeah, so in terms of children's social care, the actions that we took around the apprentices and the work that we've done around that means that that staffing pressure is beginning to level off. We need to wait till next quarter to see the full impact of that, but it is starting to have a positive impact, so we're really pleased to see that. I think in terms of placement costs, we're not seeing those level off currently, then they're still at a price that far exceeds what they were pre-pandemic and that's seen nationally as well. So we're hopeful that some of the work the government's doing around the care review and the implementation plan may begin to tackle some of that, but we need to wait and see the detail of that when it comes out.
Thank you, Leader. Couple of things of note. The first is that within the council, social work OT and nurse recruitment has improved slightly and we're finding that we're able to retain more people now, so there are fewer departures and slightly more arrivals, if you take my meaning. The second thing to note is, particularly in the home care market, there have been some slight improvements again in recruitment and retention, though the challenge is considerable, particularly in the run-up to Christmas, where capacity demands are excessive. The third thing is that in the next few weeks, we're expecting the government to announce a 15 million pound international recruitment fund to support social care recruitment from international, people from different countries or people who are here with a right to remain and the opportunity to work here, again targeted at social care. I'm leading on this for the region, East Midlands, and the hope is that by working together, we can make the East Midlands and of course Lincolnshire be particularly attractive for people who might want to come and work in social care, but from other countries. Thank you, Leader.
I also note from the, well, I was actually up over in scrutiny, but obviously it's noted the government supports the reforms to payment for social care. So I suppose the first question is how that will affect this council and the second one, obviously the government's made some money available, extra money available for, to help with what they call bed blocking. So could you just update us on what your assessment of what that will mean for us?
Thank you, Leader. So this is a personal view, but I think it's one shared by my colleagues across the country. There is significant disappointment that the long-term plan and the long-term funding requirement for social care at the national level has again been put back. This is the second time, first time was following the Care Act introduction in 2014, the so-called DILNOT funding reforms. So once again, we are effectively being given short-term cash for a long-term problem that needs a long-term solution. And it is disappointing to my colleagues across the sector. Having said that, the Chancellor's announcement made a material difference to the mood music in the sector in terms of the additional funding that was going to be made available in a number of different tranches. Of course, for councils, this is a particular challenge because the sector requires of us longer-term, as it were, funding agreements in order to run business as well. And it's a risk to councils to enter into longer-term agreements when government funding is short-term. Having said that, though, it is positive. We're still working through the detail and I think the expectation is that it will help us over the next year, possibly up to two years, but some of that detail is missing. And of course, we still do not know what is going to happen to the Public Health Grant or indeed to the Better Care Fund, both of which are significant contributory elements to financial sustainability. And with respect to the 500 million discharge fund, councillor Woolley, when she chairs the Health and Wellbeing Board this afternoon, will receive a report that is a joint report from both myself on behalf of the county council and John Turner, who's the chief executive of the Integrated Care Board, in terms of the proposals for how we intend to spend that this year. It does need to be spent this financial year and particularly addressing flow in the acute hospital. Thank you, Leader.
Any further questions, comments? If not, I'll move straight to the recommendations there on page nine. So all in favour of that recommendation, which basically just note the report, so all in favour? Thank you. Thank you for that. Right, move on to the next paper then, which is capital monitoring report.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So the current forecast position at quarter two is an underspend of 11.3 million, with the majority of this variance being reported as the capital contingency. We maintain that capital contingency mainly because we knew that there would be pressures on the budget in light of the inflationary items that we've just talked about, specifically around construction. So we'll be looking at that budget when we move into the budget setting and the recommendations for exec on that budget going forward. There are some smaller variances. We've got a small overspend forecast on highways maintenance of 3 million and a small underspend of 2 million on fire and rescue appliances and equipment budget. The highways do generally forecast overspends at this year, they programme, overprogramme to allow for any poor weather, to make sure that those grant monies are spent during the year. So the budget setting will address some of the pressures that are coming through on the major schemes, so particularly Grantham Southern Relief Road and North Hican Relief Road, and we'll look at those as part of budget setting and the level of the contingency that we're currently forecasting on. But no other comments for me? Thank you.
Councillor Parker?
The only point that was, has been brought to my attention relates to appendix D of these papers, which is about the education transport links to school, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I apologise. Yeah, so it's about appendix D and it's about the education transport links to schools. So at the OSMB meeting, concern was raised about whether the health and safety aspects of children cycling to school on busy roads have been considered in the cost versus benefit analysis of sustainable travel schemes. OSMB asked for further information to be supplied on the funding being put into cycling to encourage its use and how much analysis was being undertaken for these sustainable travel schemes. There was particular issue, concern, I suppose, on the health and safety aspects, particularly for cycling.
Reassure councillor Parker that in the context of the way these schemes are developed, obviously health and safety is a prime consideration. It's part of the problem of our ability to actually deliver these schemes in a timely manner because some of the proposals that come forward aren't as straightforward as perhaps people would perhaps believe, particularly when you're dealing with sort of areas down in the fens where sort of long, straight roads aren't necessarily conducive to sort of like the easy introduction of footpath and cycleways. It also ties into the challenges we have of actually securing the land that's required to actually implement these facilities, but I can reassure you that health and safety is absolutely one of the main drivers to make sure we get the right facilities. It's not in the interests of ourselves, the parents or the schools to create a situation which is actually going to create risks for the pupils.
Thank you. Sorry, all I'd say is it would be good if we could have a written report back to OSMB setting out the gist of what you've just said.
Yeah, I'm aware that there was a request for further information, which we'll obviously make sure. It's also maybe worth referencing the transport strategies that are going forward to the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee next week. Again, a big emphasis in all of those transport strategies for the towns around the county is about looking more about cycling and walking provision. So again, it's something which is increasingly becoming a prominent element of our ongoing delivery of transport improvements.
Yeah, I mean, it is take longer because there are various schemes, but this is quite complicated to say put a footway in to make it safe, but I think that's fair enough. There is some progress being made, but probably for the very reasons being raised, it sometimes takes longer to make sure that all the criteria are being dealt with. Any further comments, questions? Not seeing anybody indicate? Okay, recommendations there on page forty-nine. So are you supportive, all those in favour, recommendations please show? Thank you. Move on to the final paper, which is the performance report or what do you, I don't know, you call it something else these days, don't you? Anyway, Caroline, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, page seventy-one in your pack is the start of the report, which outlines the performance of the priorities outlined in our corporate plan as at the end of quarter two, so September 2022. You'll recall from previous reports, there are two mechanisms within the reporting framework. One is around the key activities to deliver those objectives in the plan and the other are a set of key performance indicators. Full details of all the activities and the key performance indicators are on the council's website and the full list of activities are reported in appendix A of the pack on page ninety-seven. It's pleasing to report all thirty-nine activities are progressing as planned, which is a really positive picture, given the challenges that are being faced by many services and we'll continue to monitor the progress, obviously, the remainder of the year. There are twenty-two key performance indicators that we can report on within this reporting period and of those, seventy-three percent are either exceeding or achieving the target that has been set. That's a three percent increase on quarter one reporting. So again, a really positive picture against some quite challenging targets. There are four indicators that are exceeding their target in the report and they are represented by the gold star. Three of these were exceeding their performance in quarter one as well and they relate to the percentage of household waste going to landfill, that our customers' level of satisfaction and voluntary and community groups actively supported in Lincolnshire. There's one new measure, which wasn't exceeding in quarter one, but is now in quarter two, and that's the household waste collected, so the kilogram per household. This is a really positive picture and indicates that households are minimising the waste they're disposing of, which is in line with our waste strategy objectives. There are twelve indicators that are achieving their target, represented by a green tick. Eight of these measures were achieving in quarter one as well and still remain green. One of those is around the percentage of our sixteen and seventeen-year-olds not in education, employment or training. Two measures relate to our children in care population, that's the rate of children in care per 10,000 population and the percentage of our children in care living within a family environment. Again, two challenging targets in the current environment. Four measures relate to adult social care, so the percentage of facilities rated good or outstanding by the Care Quality Commission, the percentage of working-aged adults living in our community, the percentage of older adults living in the community and the percentage of people who remain home ninety-one days after hospital discharge. Again, a very positive picture. And the final measure, one that is now performing well, which has done for the last two quarters, is the percentage of superfast rural bank coverage in residential and business premises. There are actually three new KPIs that have been reported as achieving their target in quarter two that weren't previously. The first one is the percentage of identified high and medium-risk business premises inspected under fire safety order. This is the first time that it's been measured as part of the corporate plan and we were keen to include a measure around our fire and rescue service and it was showing a really positive impact and outcome. The percentage of eligible two-year-olds who are in seat of their early years entitlement, whilst this measure is achieving its target of eighty percent, just wanted to reflect on the fact that there is an element of parental choice when taking up this entitlement. However, our children's health service and our early years teams work really closely with our most vulnerable families to enable them to access this offer. We also have the percentage of children with an education, health and care plan in a mainstream setting achieving its target. This is a nationally published measure and we can effectively benchmark this against comparator authorities. So again, a positive picture that children are remaining in a mainstream setting where that is appropriate. There are six measures that are not achieving their target within this reporting period. Four of these measures weren't achieving their target in quarter one previously. Two of those measures do relate to recycling, so the recycling rate, which is a new national formula, and the recycling at county council-owned household recycling centres. Given that we have two measures that are exceeding performance in relation to the amount of waste going to landfill and the amount collected from household waste, there is clearly a positive picture as well. The measures that are not achieving their targets, obviously, one is a new recycling rate with a national formula that can be affected by national changes to the definition and household recycling centres, which can be affected by seasonal weather. With that in mind, I'm working with the executive director for place to ensure that when we report in quarter three, that we've got consistency across both the reporting here to executive, but also to the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee. We'll ensure that we produce a glossary of terms to ensure that commentary is really clear and understandable to provide that further narrative around the actual impact and also what some of the definitions around the changes that may have occurred to the national measure. Hopefully, that will give clear and consistent reporting around all of these waste measures. The next measure that's not achieving its target is relates to the percentage of contacts resolved through early resolution. We are continuing to see an increase in contacts into the council, particularly in September, when schools returned after the summer break. There were lots of school transport-related inquiries that were received. Other high-volume areas that we've seen in previous quarters remain the same in terms of highway repairs and education, health and care plans. We continue to work on early resolution across all of these service areas. The days lost to sickness absence per full-time equivalent, whilst it still isn't achieving its target, we have seen a small reduction, which has changed from eight point seven four days per full-time equivalent to eight point six nine. Covid continues to impact and without Covid, we would be below the seven point five days per FDE target. We're continuing to manage sickness absence through our absence procedures as well as providing a comprehensive package of health and wellbeing support to our workforce. There are two new measures that are not performing in quarter two that weren't previously reported, underperforming. These both relate to Ofsted inspection outcomes in our schools, the percentage of schools that are judged good or outstanding and the percentage of pupils in good or outstanding schools. I can verbally update and clarify that within the report, the drop in performance is due to Ofsted judgements on three secondaries and one primary academy, whose reports were published during the quarter two period. Plans are in place to support the required improvement with these schools and we've had a positive inspection outcome from Ofsted in a number of our small maintained primary schools, which continue to be the best education for our young children. There is another type of key performance indicator that we include, which is our contextual key performance indicators. So this is where we don't have, we don't set a target, but we are given a RAG rating by our exec director. There are four measures that are identifying as performing particularly well. Firstly, around visitors to heritage attractions and we continue to see really positive attendance across the county. The percentage of people who are unemployed and two measures relating to our CO2 emissions. We have amended these measures in terms of the CO2 emissions so that they are aligned with our Green Master Plan and our carbon management strategy. There are a number of measures that we can't report in quarter two, they are listed in section, excuse me, four point six on page ninety-three. Often they're mainly for reasons that we are based on national data that has yet to be published. I can update the committee that since writing the report, there has been an agreement between the leader and the adult care portfolio holder around two measures that we will include from quarter three reporting around adult social care, that is around adult safeguard in cases supported by an advocate and the concluded adult safeguard inquiries where the desired outcomes were achieved. So they will be included in quarter three reporting. I'll now hand over for any questions.
Thank you, Caroline. Councillor Parker, obviously the long debate on this one, overview and scrutiny, but I'll hand over to you.
I'm sorry I missed that, yes, actually. The three areas that OSMB looked at was waste and recycling, education and early years. Start with waste and recycling. I think the point that was made to start with was that when the Energy for Waste Plant is working at capacity, that there was a risk of having a greater landfill figure if the presentation of waste made it so. So to what extent do we work at maximum capacity for the energy for waste plant so that we have to move into landfill? The second point was about an educational campaign across Lincolnshire, going up from the county council, district councils, to improve residents' understanding of what goes into the different bins. One of the issues is that sometimes a subtle change of what categories of waste are categorised differently by the government, which had still a bit of confusion. But there was a point that was made, was we wanted to look in detail about the variations by district in relation to landfill to see whether or not anything can be gained or lessons learned from different recycling rates in relation to different local authorities. The question of the cost of living crisis was raised in relation to the potential explanation for lower presentations of wasted household recycling centres. The underlying argument could well be that with the cost of living crisis, people are buying less and as a result, less waste was being generated. That's a matter that we still need to get, all of these issues, we're hoping to get something back from the relevant directors for our next meeting. The second point is about education and the percentage of schools that are judged good or outstanding. We were interested in trying to understand the combination of reasons for schools not being being judged good or outstanding, which was about teaching and learning safeguarding issues. We noted that in terms of quality of teaching and learning, which had been highlighted in some of the Ofsted inspection reports, the council was following up on these with the regional schools commissioner. But again, we'd like to hear something back. And then finally, the early years, the OSMB board reflected on the eighty percent target of eligible two-year-olds who are in seat of an early years entitlement and whether the council should be aiming for a hundred percent rather than eighty percent to ensure that all young children were engaged in an early years setting. So again, we'd be looking to get some feedback on that point that was raised by OSMB.
Thank you for that. Right, probably just deal with those three in turn which have been raised by everyone's group. First one's waste and recycling. I think it was quite frustrating for me because, and again, it comes back to, are we reporting targets for ourselves or are we reporting targets for government? And to me, on page forty-seven, seventy-seven, the one which Andy raised at the meeting, the one that really matters is how much is actually going to landfill of the waste, which currently is four point four seven percent, which is below the five percent target. And it does seem to me, the way these are presented, are we trying to, you know, as councillors, we want to do the right thing for Lincolnshire. I understand that they have to be reporting to government. Frankly, I don't agree with the way the government classifies it because they want to pretend that energy from waste plants isn't recycling, which it clearly is. But there is another agenda from the, sort of the, can I say, the green lobby to actually not do that. So I think there's an issue there about how you do that. We don't know, Andy, wants to just revise. There was lots of talk about how much we, you know, I think it's a good story, but it just got a bit buried for all of, for the committee and I think for the public as actually what really matters.
Yeah, I think one of the difficulties councillor Hill is, in the context of picking out the indicators and reporting them individually, you lose sight of the overall picture. And as Caroline sort of indicated in her introduction, the overall position is in line with our waste strategy. So I do wonder whether we'd be better trying to have a narrative that actually talked about the big picture as it affects Lincolnshire, rather than highlighting the individual indicators, which can appear to be contradictory. So the presentation of waste at the household waste recycling centres, if that is a consequence of less waste being presented, well, we'll never actually hit that indicator, but in essence, it's a good sign because there's less waste in the system. It also plays back into the unanswered question of how effectively we'll work across the waste partnership of the collection authorities and the disposal authority being on exactly the same page. So again, I think a realignment, as you heard on the day, questions being raised about performance information that had been presented to one of the districts, which seemed to contradict our information. It's the same information, it's obviously been presented in a slightly different way. We need to avoid that way of, as I say, the same information, sort of perhaps confusing the public as to actually what's actually happening out there. And in terms of councillor Parker's comments regarding education, that again is something that has to be owned across all of the eight authorities. It's got to be a joined-up approach, both as collection and disposal authorities to deal with that. And when we have had joined-up approaches, it has brought benefits. The card and paper trial that is now rolling out to the other districts is definitely making a difference. There are one or two hiccups in terms of some individuals struggling to understand that it's dry paper and card that goes into your purple topped bin as opposed to wet or contaminated paper and card. But the underlying messages are that that is making a difference to our overall recycling position and is delivering an income stream because the quality of that recycled product is something that the market actually wants access to.
Yeah, thank you. So I think there is an issue there about how we present these, if they measure, because it, you know, I found it very frustrating, the debate actually, because I think this is a good news story and, you know, the fact is ninety, over ninety-five percent of all the waste presented finds a useful second life, which is the real story, but it's sort of buried there, that figure. So I just think there is a, A, a presentational issue and B, A, actually what we do measure for ourselves and what we tick the box for central government for.
Thank you very much, just to come in on that. Certainly for the corporate plan, we can decide which performance indicators we want to have in there, notwithstanding that we will still need to report to national government all of the various indicators. But certainly for what we present in the corporate plan can be meaningful for our residents and so we can change that to adapt what we think is important. So if it's acceptable to this committee, then we could talk to councillor McNally outside the meeting and review the targets if that's acceptable.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. I think it was at the last Waste Partnership meeting, there was a discussion over the actual recycling rate of fifty percent. There was a general acceptance that that isn't going to be met for quite some time, but everyone felt it necessary to actually keep that in there for more of an ambition and that's what we hope to achieve. But there is an acceptance that it won't be achieved, you know, within the next few years.
My view is we're actually recycling ninety-five percent of our waste because, you know, if you believe the energy for waste plant is a form of recycling, which it is, that's the figure to me. And of course, this fifty percent target was historic, due to historic government funding. And really, I don't know why we keep on about it and that's really, you know, it just needs a revamp, so I think that's fair. Councillor Corey.
Yeah, you want to come back? Yeah, sorry. But you're absolutely right, and the sort of, the forty-five, fifty percent figure on the actual chart, if it could just include the, you know, so much recycled, so much from energy, all on the one actual graph and then the total, you know, in total, this much has only gone to landfill. And I think that's more of a clearer explanation of what's actually happened to the stuff.
Thank you councillor McNally, has just answered my question. Thank you, Leader.
Do we move on to the education question then, please? So Heather and Tricia.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. If I go first and then councillor Bradwell can add. So obviously, the local authority has no formal role in intervention when an academy is judged inadequate. That now sits with the regional director of the Department for Education. And so again, it's a little bit, as with the previous target, these targets are placed upon us, but actually some of the control and intervention doesn't sit with the local authority, the funding for that's being removed. However, we do get involved with academies and we do work with them and we work very closely with the regional director. So we have met with the regional director in November to challenge her about the performance of these secondary academies and seek further reassurance. The regional director has told us that they have engaged with these academies, they have asked these academies for a written response to their inspection with evidence that they have got the capability to improve. And then the regional director will make a decision about whether she agrees with them or not. If she does not agree with them, they will either, if they're standalone academies, be placed into a trust or if they're within a trust, they will be removed from that trust and re-brokered to another trust. One of the things that's really important for us as a local authority in that period of time with an academy is the engagement the academy does with our offer around inclusion. You know, it's really important that we don't see an academy judged inadequate, therefore they exclude a high number of children because the responsibility for those children passes straight to the local authority in terms of meeting their education. And that has been a little bit of a pattern in the past. So we're working with the regional director to raise those concerns about the inclusion of children in those academies as they move forward.
On that last subject, I just want to raise a question that applies to myself as a local councillor, but it will also apply across the piece. And that's to do with, if we just take an example like one of the academies in Lincoln, which is under special measures at the moment and is likely not to be seen as improving and I think the deadline is Christmas. Whether or not the local councillors can be kept informed in relation to academies, which we would normally be having access through in different ways if we were school governors, but academies do their recruitment in different ways, as to how local councillors can be kept informed of the current status of particular secondary schools. And I use that as an example, particularly secondary schools, because our pupil, the people who live in our communities actually send their kids to those schools.
Yeah, so I mean, so that's one for us to think about. So what we've discussed following OSMB is that Martin Smith, the Assistant Director for Education, is going to come and do some workshops with, across the council to support councillors, really to understand how much the landscape's changed around what we do know about schools and what we don't know about schools and what was a reasonable expectation of quite a large department six years ago is now five people working in the team. So their knowledge of individual academies is likely to be a lot less and also their ability to keep local councillors up to date around those academies is likely to be a lot less. I mean, one I would encourage all councillors, and we'll go through this at the workshop, can register on Ofsted and you can register for which schools you're interested in and that will give you the parent view, it will give you the Ofsted outcome and we can talk you through how to do that. We do report to scrutiny committee regularly on educational standards and on the performance of academies. And we also have a report that goes to schools forum about the status of academy reports, which again is all available, but we just, I think, need to be explaining to councillors how they can access all of that information. But I think it's fair to say our oversight of academies is not where it was five years ago. It's not meant to be there, it's meant to be through the regional director's team. And that feels difficult because we're an authority who prided ourselves on knowing our schools well and I was the assistant director at that time and, you know, we still have the head teachers calling us, we still have a close relationship with them, but it has changed and so the insight we have has changed and sometimes we're relying on different pathways to get that information. So I don't want to commit to being able to keep people up to date on information that we might not have access to until it's in the public domain.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, I think indeed, it's not just, there's performance, but like with care homes, and I think councillors, you can actually look at care homes in your area and look at their reports as well. But I think probably as part of the sort of performance, so councillors understand what's going on in their area, in their patch, it would be part of a, probably a development opportunity or something, just so we can help councillors. Because you need to, you have to look. I mean, the other thing I would say, is there no route where you can go to, with academies, go to the regional route to say, won't they do that? Can't we ask them to give some, volunteer some information?
Yeah, they do share a lot of information with us. I think the problem is the information that's shared with us is often confidential and it's shared with us in order to, so we can feed into their professional decision-making. And so whether they, at this point, they wouldn't allow us to share that with local councillors.
Sorry, we are talking about a public service funded by the taxpayer, so why is it confidential?
So I think what they would do is, they would, so what the regional director wants to do, and the government has published its ambition around this, is to be more transparent about its decision-making. So they want a framework that says, actually, this is how we will intervene with schools and academies at different points. And in Lincolnshire, we would like more church academy trusts, which is one of the things that they would definitely want for Lincolnshire, so there's more choice and capacity to take church schools into a multi-academy trust. So they want to be very transparent about that. I think one of the things that, at the decision-making point, that will be transparent and there will be a note published, but the discussions they have about which trust might be a best match for which school is something they do with the trusts and the school to try and get to that best outcome, but it isn't something that's done in the public domain. And the head teacher board does publish its minutes, which is where the decisions are made and people can get those minutes. The other point I was going to make about councillors is about the relationship they have with their local schools. I think unfortunately for many councillors, the time they engage with their local schools is when they have a resident who's unhappy and quite rightly, they want to support that resident and so they either make contact with us or they make contact with the school directly. And I guess there's something about councillors getting on to the newsletter of their local school, going to the nativity, you know, asking if they can be invited to that, going to the summer fairs, getting to know that head teacher, because then you would get a much more balanced side. The vast majority of schools do a really good job for the vast majority of children most days. Sometimes things go wrong and that tends to be what councillors have receiving their inbox or receive when they're talking to residents. So it's about how can you get to know your schools outside of that kind of conflict regime? I think that would be really helpful because there's lots of schools doing lots of things in their communities that people can get involved in. I know lots of you already do.
In the good old days, I call it, councillor Parker and I can remember, when we, as you said, we had a big department, if you, if there was a concern about a school in the council's patch, that council would be approached to say, just to let you know confidentially, we are concerned. Just how that has gone and I'm not, because we haven't got the capacity here to do it. I mean, it's all very well say going to see the head, but the head will just tell you how everything is wonderful and what a wonderful job they're doing, as they tend to tell governors or they certainly did in the old days. So I just think it's that, and if a parent says, well, I'm not happy, you know, we can come to us, but you don't have, hold the information. So it's a question of how, the route to somewhere to do that. And it's one of the, I mean, you know, academies are fine, but it just, there is a bit of a lack of transparency about what goes on in them. Councillor Bradwell.
Can I just come back and make, ask the question? We cannot have so many failing schools that it's too big a job for the education department to actually tell the local councillor that there's a problem.
Yeah, well, if the local council doesn't know and doesn't know what's going on, I don't know. It's because it's all been dismantled and deliberately dismantled by government, as Heather said, you've got a small team there who, and actually the information we get is very limited, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely, we can, I can talk to the team. I think the difficulty is sometimes we don't know about that issue until the Ofsted inspections happened. Sometimes what we're hearing about a school is maybe from a colleague head teacher who's saying, I'm a bit worried about having a lot of children move from their school to my school, that's often the first sign. And at that point, professionally, to be briefing members, it's the framework around which we would do that, I think, would be very, very difficult because it's about making sure the information we're giving is evidence-based and correct. And if we're not in the academies, we can't verify it for ourselves until Ofsted does that.
If there is a concern, not saying, you know, should local members be informed? Say you, we come aware because of the Ofsted report, should, how much information should local members have? Because at least to know there is a, you know, in terms of corporate parenting, well, sorry, that's part of our role. And if there's a problem in a school, as a corporate parent collectively, that we should be told.
Because academies are what, academies are what they are and actually we have no jurisdiction to go into an academy and God forbid, if we knew, if we had been given some information, but it is up to the academy to actually devolve that around to the local parents and to, and if they wanted to tell their local councillor, because they are like a private business. I mean, it isn't what we want and it's not that healthy, but I mean, if once I think the Ofsted report's out, then actually that is then common knowledge and we could then, you could brief councillors. But I think Heather's right, you know, since we've had the academy system, local members haven't been as engaged with those schools. And I have to say, majority of them, I think, welcome their local councillors to come in. I know when I go round schools, and I know I'm slightly different, but I mean, they do welcome people to come in and take an interest. And actually, I think if you build that relationship up with the school, the head teacher would give you a ring and say, well, look, just letting you know, we've had not a very good Ofsted, but, you know, the regional schools commissioner, as Heather said, has no, they've got no need to tell us anything really, it's just because we've got a very good working relationship with the regional schools commissioner's team, haven't we? And they will come and ask us things, but... team, haven't we? And they will come and ask us things. But they're totally at arm's length. And I know that's not satisfactory, but that's where we are. Blame Mr. Gove.
Yeah, and hear what you're saying, but there is a, there's a point of principle here. If this council holds knowledge, on what pre-premise will it withhold that knowledge from councillors who are in that area? I'll let councillor Davies come in, because I think that's quite a key point.
Yes, absolutely, Leader. The point you make is clear. I mean, I think if, candidly, if officers know something that's serious about something in my area that they're not telling me, that creates breach of trust and confidence with the officers. But the point I wanted to make is, I think this is actually very serious, this problem. And let's not forget that when you look at the charts, it's very clear that we, this isn't a problem everywhere England's having. One in four of our children are going to a school that is not good or outstanding. We put on the front of our leaflets, we support excellent schools in Lincolnshire. Well, I'm afraid off the back of this, we don't have excellent schools. They aren't good enough. And I hear what you're saying about schools wishing to engage. Well, I'll speak anecdotally. Short of putting up signs saying, you know, barring me, my local primary school academy in my area couldn't be less willing to engage if they tried. They are obtuse, difficult, and extremely combative. And that's me saying that. They are creating with the local community numerous problems and numerous failings. And then we've got over the border slightly, in councillor Whittington's patch, we've got one of the worst-performing schools in the country, in West Grantham Academy. It's changed its name again, which gives it a bit of a reprieve, because it means when you go on to the Ofsted site, there are no Ofsted reports. It's a, it's a great coming plan, we should all do it. But the reality is, this is a disgrace. It's really not good enough. And I hear what Heather's saying about capacity, and I get that. But I have to agree with councillor Parker. If we're talking about a relatively small number of schools that are failing, and we are talking about letting down our children, there is no more serious role for us as an authority than promoting and developing children's education. It's one of the foundation tenants of what local authorities are here to do. And we are failing in that. And I think we need to be doing more, and I think there needs to be a proper analysis and inquiry into what's going on. Because it is clear, from our statistical neighbours, we are performing worse than they are, and they exist in the same regulatory framework that we do. So something here in Lincolnshire, I'm not saying it's LCC's fault, but something here in Lincolnshire means we are not as good as other local authorities of a similar nature. And we cannot allow that to continue. Because I think for too long, candidly, and councillor Bradwell thanked me for saying this, I think we've turned a blind eye to failing education.
Need to come back, Mr. Chairman, because I take exception to that. Because if you knew how much time officers have worked trying to get a proper, reasonable trust to take over West Grantham Academy, that it's a church school, but I have to say, and the church, the diocesan, will only have, they insist that it has to be a trust that is approved by the diocesan, they won't have any trust. We have now actually got a good trust in there, and they will be working to obviously make that trust better. But that trust has been, and I have to say, yes, I'm, I'm not happy about how that has been, and it's took years. It has absolutely took years to get a trust in there, which we're happy, and we can see them improving that school. But our hands are tied. And that shouldn't be the case, I know, and I'm as frustrated as you. I could go also to Gainsborough Academy. A trust was put in there, as a local authority, we said that trust is, you know, we don't want that trust to actually take over the school, because they were quite a way away, they weren't a trust that we knew. And that poor school has, has been not giving an adequate education. Hopefully now, because the, we're able to, they're looking for another trust to take it over, and we hopefully will have some say in what trust comes there. But it is really key, that, I agree with you, that we get the right trust in, in a canopy. And, you know, but at the end of the day, our hands are tied. And we do, it is only through the good relationship which we have with the regional schools' commissioner, that we are able to make some change occasionally. But, you know, this is where we are, and it is the fault of what the academy system.
I mean, I'm not denying people are working hard. I mean, being completely candid, I'm not really interested in inputs, I'm interested in outputs. I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is an LCC fault, I'm not saying Heather and her team are responsible. They're clearly not responsible for poor performing schools. That's not the point at all. The point is, the framework that exists in Lincolnshire is the frame, same framework as Leicestershire, as Nottinghamshire. And in those neighbouring authorities, the numbers don't lie, they don't have as many children going to rubbish schools as we do. So clearly, as much as we want to talk around it and blame other people, something here in Lincolnshire, be it us, be it the schools, be it the church, whoever it is, is failing children here in Lincolnshire. And we're not talking about five children or 10 children, we are talking about hundreds of children over at least a decade. Now, that is a scandal, and we need to do something about it. Because as Leader and yourself have pointed out, if we don't, nobody else is going to. Because the academies are largely turning a blind eye. I mean, this morning, I was talking to somebody whose wife is a teacher in Sleaford, complaining they now have drug-sniffing dogs in schools in Sleaford because of the outbreak of county lines. This is Lincolnshire. What is going on? And it's shown in these figures that children are being let down, and we cannot stay silent on it any longer. And if people don't, you know, if you think I'm being rude to people, well, I'm sorry, I'm not, but we are, children are being failed, and I'm not going to stay silent on it.
Okay, well, I mean, I think the issue is, first of all, the point is that, certainly with academies, local authorities were deliberately taken out of the equation. That was the, and that was actually, it wasn't an accident, it was actually made clear that they wanted to remove schools from local authority, what they called control. And which is obviously the problem. And obviously, I think there is an issue about the regional setup or the inspection regime, which happens, but it's the visibility and the accountability because of that. I think also, I'm not sure whether it's true to say schools in Leicestershire are worse than in Lincolnshire. Because you've also got to remember, we have a selective system in Lincolnshire, not just between grammar schools and secondary schools, but between secondary schools as well. And there is, I don't know where it happens elsewhere, there are some schools in Lincolnshire which are not sort of the bottom choice of parents, which creates, and that's always been the case. To me, it's all about how we get knowledge of what's going on. Because if, if officers hold information, we should have a reasonable expectation to be told, at least there is a problem, if we don't even know what the problem is. But, do you want to just come back, Heather?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the, the kind of, if there is a problem that was unexpected, I do tend to, we do tend to phone people, we do tend to brief people. I've briefed you in terms of some of the, the elements in your area, councillor Davies. And it's, and if an incident happens in a school, we do tend to brief people. So I don't want to give the impression that we're not, we're not briefing councillors, we absolutely are. I guess what I'm a little bit anxious about is promising we will let you know if there is a problem in your local school. Because unless it's serious and significant, we're unlikely to know it ourselves. And where we do know it, we certainly do give people the, the heads up that an Ofsted inspection's happened, it's been, you know, not favourable, and we brief councillor Bradwell, and then councillor Bradwell often calls a local member to let them know before, before that happens. So I think that, I wouldn't like to give the impression that we're not sharing that knowledge. And certainly, where we've had, you know, really significant incidents in our schools, we've made sure the local member knows about that before it hits the press and understands what the council's doing about that, and would continue to do that. I do think you're right, Mr. Chairman, about the selective system we have in Lincolnshire. It can make it incredibly hard for some of our non-selective schools to meet the threshold at the Ofsted inspection, because they're inspected on the same framework as the selective schools, they're expected to get the same percentage. So what you can see at GCSE is actually, we have a performance that's broadly in line with our stat neighbours, not, not significantly below. But the Ofsted performances, because those children are disproportionately placed in different schools, can highlight it. And that is, you're absolutely right, councillor Davies, something that is very different in Lincolnshire, and isn't, doesn't feature in any of our statistical neighbours. And does mean that we have a group of schools, and we could all name them, who struggle to get, and have always struggled to get good at Ofsted. They have a missing cohort that would potentially help them attain Ofsted's expectations, because they're in the grammar schools.
Just a question, really. It would be useful to know, who are our stat neighbours on the report? Because Kent have grammar schools, don't they? North Yorkshire's grammar schools. I don't know whether they include-
I think there are not many, because what you find, Kent and, but some, some places have very few grammar schools, and in effect become super, super duper, because they are so selective about that. I mean, there is an issue of our grammar schools and some of the measuring, and the way they do not, some of them do not take locally, which I think is a scandal, and they do that, we know they do that. But also, some of them, I think there is some, there is an issue of sometimes some coasting, isn't there? Which is, it's a case. But, yeah, okay, well, I think we'll move on from that. But it is an important subject, and I think, not an easy answer, but I think we do, you know, we need to keep on looking at how we can be, be, but it's probably just going into the school, the head will tell you how everything's wonderful. That's, that's life. Yeah, I've been there, and they've said how wonderful it is, and Ofsted got it wrong, and yes, all this stuff. Right, and the final one on the, is early years, whether it's feasible to go from an 80% target to a 100% target on that measure. Heather?
Yeah, thank you very much. So attendance for two-year-olds at nursery is a parental choice. The, the target we've got benchmarks, those above our statistical neighbours and above regional neighbours, we're doing really well on this measure. But actually, it's not a statutory responsibility, it's not like attendance at schools. So I, you know, I, I think the target's set at the right, at the right level.
Right, just on looking at the report, I've got one or two. If we go to page 91, just, I suppose the basic question is, the, the CO2 emissions reduction seems to be flatlining a bit. And I don't know why we've gone back to 1617, why we need to go back 400 years to measure recycling targets, but... I know, I know we like to measure, but this is ridiculous. So can I just ask Andy, I suppose, we're just flatlining a bit, is that a concern, or?
On one level, it is councillor Hill. On another level, no, because next year, we need to refresh the carbon management plan. So we will be bringing through to councillors a new carbon management plan, which should then give us the trajectory for the next period in terms of the improvements we need to make. Being honest with you, though, there are going to be some challenges in the context of the areas that we're going to have to tackle. The two big areas are our footprint from our estate, the physical buildings we operate from, and from our transport. And both of those are going to require sort of significant investment to continue the direction of travel that we've got. But that will come out as we bring the carbon management through to you for approval next year.
Thank you. And moving along to one I didn't understand, was percentage, this is on page 82, percentage of older adults living in the community, which is apparently below target. And the explanation is there are, there are fewer people presenting to adult, for adult care, social care. Don't understand what that's got to do with the number of people living in the community. Perhaps you could help me on that. That's target P118.
Thank you, Leader.
A sudden reduction of elderly people in the county, or what?
Thank you. This is the number of people who are actually presenting to us, and it's an equation, so there's a numerator and a denominator. If the, if the, the number above the line diminishes-
Can I just stop you there?
Oh, right, sorry.
The title is percentage of older adults living in the community. Well, that's not what, it's not the, that's not the right title, is it?
Thank you, Leader. So the, the target is a national target, and it's reported frequently. It's also seen as good practice in terms of supporting more people at home rather than in residential settings. Caroline?
I'm sorry, what it says is percentage of older adults, older adults living in the community. Doesn't say anything about supporting or anything else. So, A, the title's wrong, and frankly, I'm getting a bit bored. Why we are performance managing tick boxes from government, what I want to be managing, performance managing, is stuff that we want is important for Lincolnshire. So if all we're doing is looking at regurgitated national targets, frankly, I'm not that interested. Sure, you are, because obviously, we have to be, you know, we'll be inspected soon, won't we? So we'll have to be in line. But, Caroline, can you just help us on this?
Yeah, I think, like you say, it's a balance, isn't it? Because one of the things by using national measures is obviously, we can then benchmark them against other local authorities, which I know is obviously important to see as a context in terms of how are we performing? Happy to look at, obviously, using a more user-friendly, if you like, title for the measure, because it is about those adults presenting to us in terms of adult social care, who then we support to maintain living in the community rather than going into, whether it's a residential or community supported living or other, other service. So happy, certainly happy to look at, that's what the measure is trying to obviously tell us, is we're actually enabling those people that present to us to remain living in their own home or within the community, whether it's with a family member. And it, and the reason why we use this measure, as I say, is to be able to then see how we do then compare to others. But certainly happy to look at rewording that in a more, in a more appropriate way, and certainly, going forward, looking at whether there's actually a more appropriate measure, just on the proviso that we may then not be able to show how we compare to other people with that local definition.
Okay, well, I think the title does need-
Yeah.
-changing. But I think there is, again, an issue, there's a national targets, but also, when we're setting the targets next year, for next year, how, how much of it is useful for our local knowledge and how much is, and I think there needs to be a differential about, this is a national target, because they obviously are adjusted according to what some minister or civil servant wants to know, as opposed to we want to know really what's really going on in Lincolnshire. So I think there's a job of work to do there in terms of looking at that. Okay. Any further questions, comments, please? Not seeing anything else, so we'll go back to the recommendations, which are, so we consider noted, and I think also that, I think we need to add on to that, that a further look at how these local, local priorities are measured in future. Thank you. Okay, so all those in favour, the recommendations, please show. Thank you. That's agreed. And that brings the meeting to a close. Thank you for your attendance.